Regular meeting of the Joliet City Council, August 6, 2013, at 6:30 with Mayor Thomas Giarani presiding, and we're going to have the pastor, Vinton Ritchie, with the First Christian Church at 1701 Leoway Road, start us off with prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, Creator of heaven and earth, we thank you for blessing America and blessing this great city of Joliet, the city of champions. Bless Mayor Mr. Giarantani, councilwoman Ms. Barber, and Ms. Quillman. Councilmen Mr. Gur, Mr. Hug, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Morris, and Mr. Odekirk. Bless our city manager, Mr. Thanis. May each one serve the community by joining one another in peace and harmony. May they compromise for the benefit of Joliet and its citizens. And thank you that my mother and father became a part of Joliet in 1941 and raised four boys to become good citizens of Joliet, and God-fearing men raised in our hometown, Joliet. Lord, I thank you that my wife and I could raise our four children in this city of Joliet and receive a great education, develop friendships, and work in this community as teachers, insurance agents, orthodontist, and minister. Our heavenly Father, we pray that each service department, especially the police and the fire department of Joliet, that you would keep them safe and healthy. May each one of us learn that we receive our authority from you, heavenly Father, who has given authority to us, and you have all authority in heaven and earth. We ask these blessings in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Giarani?
Here.
Councilwoman Barber?
Here.
Councilman Gur?
Here.
Councilman Hug?
Here.
Councilman McFarland?
Here.
Councilman Morris?
Here.
Councilman Odekirk?
Here.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Here.
Councilman Turk? First approval of minutes. Is there a motion that the minutes of the pre-council meeting held on July 15, 2013, and the regular meeting held on July 16, 2013, stand approved as recorded?
So moved.
Second? It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Gur?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Mayor Giarani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, council committee reports. First, Diversity and Community Relations Committee report.
Well, we just met this evening at 5 o'clock, and it was a very productive meeting. We had a presentation by Kathy Wells, who is also working with the Black Contractors Association, and she presented us with the presentation, People United for Change, and we're going to get this up on our website so everyone can see it. And then we also talked about the DBGs, and I'm going to let Larry explain that, followed by our attorney Jeff Plyman, who was also there, and we had union representation from Tom White and Jason Cox. So, thirty. Yeah, like Councilwoman Quillman said, we were happy to see labor there as well, too. The meeting primarily focused on Mrs. Wells' presentation. We did talk about DBEs briefly. It was a presentation from Kendall Jackson concerning the current state of the multimodal in which there seemed to be some decent minority representation in there, except for African-American. Frankly, there was zero in that presentation, but as far as females, Latino, there was some representation. So we were kind of educated as to how that project's going on the state level with the multimodal. Now, Ms. Wells, basically, what she presented was what you might refer to as an incubator program. It's a program to get young minorities involved in trades primarily, or as an example, so they can be trained and mentored, and she's presenting it as a partnership. She's already had some discussions with county and state-level officials, and what she's looking for is a support from the city in principle, a letter of support in the city for the project, and it worked out nicely because the two organized labor representatives that were at the meeting tonight are now going to meet with her and those involved in it, because it can't really go anywhere as far as an incubator or training program without the unions on board. They can partner up, and I believe Councilwoman and Quillman suggested they also approach the CED to join as a partner in this program. Because they were looking for partnerships, so. Right, as a partner. So that's basically what was presented. The long and the short of it is they're looking for city support so that when they move forward on their program in partnership with, say, the chamber, the CED, the unions, they'll also show local support from county, as well as from the city of Joliet in the form of a letter, which would possibly encourage a better chance of getting a grant, a CDBG grant, or something of that nature, and that's essentially what we had at our meeting tonight. Jeff would like to comment. Uh, yes. Uh. Chairwoman Quillman, the only thing I would add to Councilman Hug's summary is that you did have representation from organized labor. Tom White was there, who represents many labor organizations in the building trades in the three-county area. You also had the contractors present through Jason Cox, who has a local contracting business. Tom White in particular told the story of a prior project that was very similar to what's being currently proposed in terms of business incubation for minority businesses, and what he relayed to the committee and to those in attendance is that he worked very closely, his organization worked very closely, five to 10 years ago, with Reverend Brooks, who's currently on the county board, chair of the county board, and the project was very successful for its duration, and he showed a lot of interest in trying to resurrect that program using fresh blood and new people, and it seems like the black contractors would be a good place to start with that. And I think through Kendall's presentation on the multimodal, plus his presentation on his survey of Joliet and Will County to identify the number of minority-owned businesses that are out there that would be available to provide goods and services to the community and to the city, the recognition is there's a shortage of minority-owned businesses, and so you need to develop them, and that's the program that Mr. White and Reverend Brooks had implemented a few years ago, and it seems to be the path that everyone wants to take now. Okay, they call it building bridges. Uh, building bridges. That's what he said. Okay, so then we'll need to work on the, maybe get that on the next council agenda about the support letters, and what, or further. I think the next step would be to wait for the organization to firm up their operations a little bit, identify opportunities where they think they need city support, and then they come to us, and we could then issue whatever support letter is specific to their need at the time. I think what they want now is just a general expression of support, and they certainly got it from the committee, and maybe at some point they can make a presentation to the full council at a pre-council meeting when the agenda would permit, but I think I would wait for them to come back to us with a specific request. I know they're also going to contact our Senator McGuire and Senator Larry Walsh. And one more thing on our new business we had this evening, which is exactly what this community relations is going, is about, and I was happy to see folks there this afternoon. They had some issues that they called the city about, and I guess there was a language barrier in some of these issues. We were able to put these folks in contact with the proper people here at the city so they can get their issues resolved, but one thing did come up. We have, we do have translators, but I think when our, some of our employees forget to contact a translator when there is a language barrier, especially in the Hispanic community, so I would encourage our employees, when they come across someone that doesn't speak English or whatever language, if they can find someone that does speak the language, just to keep the lines of communication open, so there's no misunderstanding, because there was some misunderstanding in these issues, which could have been resolved had we had the proper communication between the two. There's specific areas, or? Well, these were neighborhood issues. One was, one was a business issue, another one was a neighborhood issue with violations that needed to be resolved and things, and Alfredo's not always involved. God love him, he's everywhere, but he's not always. He can't be everywhere, so that's what I would encourage. So actually, this committee is doing exactly what we wanted it to do, instead of having all these other smaller issues come to the council as a whole, we can take care of them at committee level, and that concludes our report. That's what committees are for. Okay.
All right. Just Tom, can we get a link up there for Kathy Wells' presentation for the Black Contractors Association? There's nothing, no vote or no policy issues involved. Is there to have a link?
I don't think there'd be a problem. Just get the letter to us, and we can have it posted.
Thank you.
Next is the Housing Authority of Joliet Liaison Committee Report.
Yes, Your Honor, we met yesterday at 1:00 PM, the Housing Authority Liaison Committee meeting here in Executive Session Room. Presenting myself, along with Councilman McFarland and Councilman Odekirk. Also, Councilwoman Barber was there, who's also the chair of the Joliet Housing Authority, along with the mayor was present, and also Attorney Plyman was present. From the Housing Authority, there were, present was the chief executive officer, Michael Simonton, along with the chief financial officer, Charlene Potts, along with their Housing Authority attorney, Eric Hanson. And Mr. Simonton gave us an update on the recovery agreement that HUD has asked them to complete, and they're just about at the point of completion. They have a couple items left that should be completed by the end of this month. So that seemed to be going on schedule with the recovery agreement. He also, there was discussion with the Open Meetings Act, there were some concerns about obtaining access to the meetings at the Housing Authority, so some of those items was discussed and would be addressed by the board, the Housing Authority Board, along with the executive officer. We also was given an update by Attorney Hanson on the executive director search. Michael Simonton is the interim director, and there's been a, a search started, and there's some applications that have been submitted, so the board will be reviewing those, and they didn't give us a timeframe on, they didn't have a time for actually seating a new executive director, but they will be working on that in the near, you know, few weeks. Also, we discussed the update on the staffing and programs because of the cuts by the federal government with some concerns. Some of the programs were cut, and the lack of staff, some of the services to the residents. So Mr. Simonton has assured us that the programs that were cut were beyond, you know, their control, and the staffing is at a level where they pretty much try to maintain the services to the residents, that he sent out letters to all the residents informing them of some of the services, maybe a little slower getting to them, but they will be working on them, and that was pretty much it.
Thank you. I know, I don't know if he mentioned it at the meeting, but because of the sequester, he had laid off 12 or 14 people, and that's affected the services.
Right, he did.
Thank you.
I show no other reports. We did receive a request about the proclamation on tonight's agenda. This proclamation is honoring the Rotary Club of Joliet's 100th anniversary.
I have a proclamation to a club that's very active in our city. They do a lot of great things, and this is bringing to the forefront some of the things they, they do and they've done over the years. Whereas since 1913, the Rotary Club of Joliet has been one of the leading service organizations in the city of Joliet, and whereas the Rotary Club of Joliet has played an important role in the history of Joliet by supporting many social service agencies and charitable institutions in the city of Joliet. Whereas the Rotary Club of Joliet developed creative ways of supporting the local economy during the Great Depression, raising the profile of Joliet Township, High School District Band, and supporting the Joliet Area Historical Museum among many of its endeavors. And whereas through these efforts, the Rotary Club of Joliet has demonstrated that its members truly live the Rotary motto of service above self over the last 100 years. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Thomas Giarani, mayor of the city of Joliet, on behalf of the Joliet City Council, do hereby congratulate the Rotary Club of Joliet on its 100th anniversary and express the appreciation of the residents of Joliet for their many contributions its members have made to the city of champions. Signed, August 3, 2013.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for the proclamation. We stand here, we have a few of us here tonight, some Rotarians in the audience. Would the Rotarians please stand up?
These folks, the current roster and the former roster of Rotary Clubs for 100 years are comprised of some of our best citizens who, with resumes deep in public service and charitable work and solving problems, real problems, and so we're very happy to be here, resting on our 100 years of success, but we're not done yet. So we will continue to serve. I represent, I stand as immediate past president, representing President Dave Thornton, who couldn't be here, and we're happy to take this proclamation and present it to our membership. Finally, I'd like to say that we do every year consider citizens for honorary membership in the Joliet Rotary Club. This year, there have been, there were three approved, and we're happy to announce that Mayor Tom Giarani has been approved as honorary member of the Joliet Rotary Club. Thank you, Tom.
Next is agenda items and reports. Council memo 316-13, the 2014 roadway reconstruction program, it is recommended this program be approved, and council memo 317-13, position vacancies. It is recommended that city manager be authorized to fill one battalion chief position for operations in the fire department and subsequent vacancies.
So moved.
Second. Questions. Krista?
In motion and seconded to approve, Councilman Gur?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
I will have to abstain on the first memo 323, and vote aye on the second memo.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Mayor Giarani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, ordinances and resolutions. Council memo 319-13, an ordinance approving a reclassification of 1100 to 1120 Parkwood Drive from B3 General Business zoning to R5 High Density Multifamily Residential zoning. It is recommended said ordinance be approved.
So moved.
Second. Questions. Erin, Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Gur?
Aye.
Mayor Giarani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 320-13, an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a used vehicle sales and lease business with auto repair in existing building located at 1506 West Jefferson Street. It is recommended said ordinance be approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
I just want to thank Mr. Gregg and the attorney, Mr. Keno, for attending that meeting last night. It went very well, and alleviated a lot of the neighborhood questions, so I think you're fed it was last minute, but it was all good, so I vote aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Gur?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Mayor Giarani?
I received a email today, and I talked to Mr. Gregg about this earlier. The concern is the condos behind, I believe there's 75 units that face that, they are concerned with the fenced-in lot back there, that there's no unoperable, inoperable vehicles stored back there, and I think that's part of the, that's part of the memo, that the, they insisted, number one. Number two, they are also concerned about, concerned about the lighting, that it does not face the condos that it faces to the north, which would be away from the condos. And thirdly, if they could, if the new owner or leasing could plant some trees along that fence that's in the back to maybe soften it up a little bit. That was, that was the person's concern, and I talked to Mr. Gregg about it, and he says that he thought the new owner would, wouldn't have any problem with that, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the condition is included on the inoperable vehicle issue, that the long-term storage of inoperable vehicles is prohibited. On the lighting and the trees, we'll work with the new owner and Mr. Keno on addressing that issue. I'm sure they'll be very cooperative. There are actually 240 units in that complex, about 75 of them face north, and a long-time development, and I know they're, they were concerned, they had contacted some staff members, but based on our research, it seems like we're dealing with a very good operator, and it sounds like he'll be very cooperative in helping us with those two issues.
Mr. Gregg did say they met with the homeowners association, and they had no concerns or complaints at, at the meeting that they met, so, and I vote aye.
Motion carried. Council memos 321 and 322-13 were approved at yesterday's pre-council meeting. Council memo 323-13, a resolution appropriating motor fuel tax funds for 2013 MFT roadways resurfacing phase two. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second. Questions. Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Gur?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Giarani?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yes.
I had a question.
Sure.
We just got back from vacation today. We were watching a program in Wisconsin yesterday about the city of Madison using sealant and chipping on relatively new roads to extend their life by 10 to 15 years. Is that something we've ever looked into, just to throw that out there?
I'm not sure. Jim Trisna, sealant and chipping to extend the life of?
New road, you know.
A new road.
Less than 10 years old they were doing.
Yeah, we, actually, we've been to a couple seminars, we've looked into it, and at this point, I don't think it's economically feasible. If you do this, you're not extending your life as long as they're talking. We have looked into it. We've talked to other communities who've done it, and the life extension is nowhere near as much as the cost is to do this, so generally, 15 to 20 years, we resurface streets. We restripe streets periodically, and that gives you a pretty nice appearance, as if the street has almost been resurfaced, but it, you don't get as much life, there's not as much bang for the dollar as you think you would get out of that. When we, like I said, we've been to a couple different seminars on that. I myself attended these also.
Okay, just curious. Krista?
Council memo 324-13 was withdrawn. Next, approval of regular current bills. Council memo 325-13, regular payroll for June 28 through July 11, 2013, $3,375,745.94. It is recommended said regular payroll be approved.
So moved.
Second?
Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Gur?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Mayor Giarani?
Aye.
Motion carried.
As a contrast, I've asked Krista to go through, but if anybody has a question on any of them, please let me know. Okay? Krista?
Next, bids and contracts, award of contracts. Council memo 327-13, purchase a tow-behind stump grinder. Council memo 328-13, award the contract for the 2013 MFT roadways resurfacing phase two. Council memo 329-13, purchase census smart point radios for fixnet replacement. Council memo 330-13, award a contract for the Madison Street Water Main Improvement Project 2013. Council memo 331-13, award a contract for the South Chicago Street Water Main Improvements Project 2013. Council memo 333-13, award a contract for the Southeastern Avenue, Osgood Street, Second Avenue, Sherman Street Water Main Improvement Project 2013. Council memo 334-13, improve payment of the 2013 wastewater discharge NPDES permit fees. Council memo 335-13, award the contract for the rehabilitation of 5504 Salma Street for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Council memo 336-13, approve payment for sanitary sewer improvements for the Bronx Corner PUD. Council memo 337-13, purchase four tandem axle trucks with plow accessories, Roadways Division. It is recommended council memos 327 through 337-13 be approved.
Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Gur?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Mayor Giarani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Amendments, change orders, and payments. Council memo 339-13, approve change order number one for the 2012 i-gig footing tile separation program. It is recommended council memo 339-13 be approved.
So moved.
Second. Questions. Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Gur?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Mayor Giarani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Licenses and permit applications, council memos 341 through 344-13 were approved at yesterday's pre-council meeting. Proclamation was previously presented. New business items were discussed at yesterday's pre-council meeting, so next is mayor and council comments.
Just under Mayor Giarani appointments, I was prepared to bring my appointment for the EDC, but because of Mike Turk not being here, and it turns out that Jim's not here either, it will be done in two weeks. Councilwoman Quillman, comments?
I'd just like to say that I enjoyed Family Fest this weekend down at Bicentennial Park. They had many bands, and there was a lot of families down there really enjoying the food and the music, and it was a beautiful weekend, and I was proud to be one of the sponsors. And just on a side note, used car lots, you know, you were, Mary, you brought up about landscaping and lighting and things like that. One of the issues that did come up at the neighborhood meeting last night was the car lot at the corner of Jefferson and Center Street. I guess there's been some conditions that have not been met there, and the concern of the neighborhood organization was like, when they go for special use permits, they would like to see that the special conditions are enforced.
Well, we can send somebody.
So, yeah, just, I just happened to think about that. So that's the, the car business at the corner of Jefferson and Center Street, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to congratulate the Spanish Center for Family Fest at Bicentennial Park. It was a great event. I was down there Saturday evening. On a personal note, I was, I got married a week and a half ago. Many in this council were there. It was July 26, so on behalf of myself and my wife Rebecca, I want to thank all those who attended both the wedding and the reception, and all the well-wishers that we've gotten for the last few weeks, and specifically, I would like to thank Father Brad and the staff at St. Raymond's, they did a wonderful job, Norm and the staff at Maury's Table, and Patty and Ignacio and the staff at 176 West where we had our reception. Again, I think many in this council were there, it was an outstanding night, the food was great, the service was terrific. They run a real first-class operation there. On another note, Commander Benton, if you could step up. Two things, tonight is the National Night Out. It's celebrated at Hartman Field, and it's going on until, I think, about 8:30 tonight. Basically, it's, it's an acknowledgement and celebration of community groups working in conjunction with the police department. Commander, I think you know how important that is.
Yeah, it occurs the second Tuesday in every August across the nation. It basically is a symbolic event that shows the partnerships between the community and law enforcement to say, basically, we're going to take back the community, we're not going to stand for the crime that occurs throughout the community, and we encourage everyone to come out tonight and attend up there at Hartman.
Thank you. And, you know, I said before, we have outstanding community groups here in Joliet. I really think they're the backbone of our community. They're the citizens that organize and are active and really concerned with their neighborhoods. Saturday morning, we, we had a horrific homicide here in Joliet, and it happened in my neighborhood in District 2. Unfortunately, it, there's no good place for something like this to happen, but it happened in a solid business, Louis Restaurant, and Commander, if you, I, we've all read the papers and heard the story, I just would like to make it clear, was there any connection like to make it clear, was there any connection at all between what happened and, and that restaurant?
No, none at all. It's, like you said, it was, it was indeed a tragic event. The fact that it occurred in a crowded restaurant in broad daylight in front of both children and adults, i- it was horrific. But you should know that this was not a random act of violence, this was an act of violence that occurred between an individual that knew his, his victim, and it had been ongoing for some time now. It could have happened at any store, at any, in any community, as you know, such acts occur across the country on a regular basis. It's no reflection on Louis Restaurant, they've been a staple in the community for the past couple of decades now. I eat there regularly myself, I encourage everyone to continue to, to frequent the restaurant, and, and again, it had nothing to do with the venue, it was, it was just a isolated incident, and I'd like to commend the officers, from those that responded to a pretty tragic, chaotic scene, all the way up through the investigators that made the arrest in relatively quick form that afternoon. They worked hard, and the person responsible is, is in custody now and is likely facing a, a long sentence.
No, thank you. And I, I agree, I, I would encourage people to, to continue to support Louis and patronize that restaurant, and please don't let this act tarnish the, the reputation of Louis. And then one final point, along those lines, we've had, well, there's been several homicides in Joliet this year, but we've had two really high-profile homicides. In the one, the Hickory Street murders, the alleged ringleader came from the 600 block of Jefferson Street. In this incident on Saturday, the alleged murderer came from the 700 block of Jefferson Street. And by no means would I think there's something wrong with the 600 or 700 block of Jefferson Street, but I would like to point out that we spend, we're spending a lot of money, tens of millions of dollars, on redo, on redeveloping specific parts of the city. And certainly, the downtown project that we're, that we're doing now is, I think, a great project, and I think it's going to reap rewards. We're in ongoing litigation with Evergreen Terrace, I don't know what the cost is, I would imagine we're near $10 million, that this cost us to this point, but that's a guess. With, 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 I, I don't think a real, we don't know what the final price tag is going to be. And I just would like to suggest that as a council, that we don't get so focused on specific areas and ignore what's going on in our neighborhoods, because, again, what happened Saturday is an example, there are problems in our neighborhoods, and I, I just would urge everyone on this council, including ourselves, to take a step back and look at what we're doing with the resources we have, and maybe considering pulling back on specific projects and instead spreading the resources out citywide, in, in a hope to, to stop something like this from happening again. So I suggesting that, and, and there's really no underlying point, but again, thank you, Commander, and, and thank you to the guys who made the rest of that day, who acted appropriately.
Thank you.
First, I'll congratulate Councilman Oderkirk and the new Mrs. Oderkirk, Rebecca, his bride, welcomed our world. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, it's kind of on the heels of, of Councilman Oderkirk, certainly not as, as tragic, and it's not as, therefore, important. But out in the, throughout the city, and especially on the, on the west side, in the new development, we've got a tsunami of, of a problem coming with the ash trees. I'm starting to get the calls day in and day out, and our arborist, Jim Tyber, is running his butt off. So I want the council as a whole to start chewing on it a little bit, that we're going to have to find some money next year, some serious money, maybe upwards of over a half a million to a million dollars to make this do, be done right. We've taken a good step, obviously, staff did a good job, and we just approved the purchase of a chipper. For those who don't know what a chipper is, that's what you're going to use to, to grind up these trees that are infected. And most of our ashes are infected or are within, from what I understand, a half mile of an infection, an infected tree. And we have an inordinate, an inordinate amount of ash trees that were planted on the west side. Today, by today's standards, you wouldn't do that, you wouldn't do more than 20% of any species. In some areas, it's as high as 80% ash. It's going to look like a bomb went off when they take these trees down, and this couldn't happen at a worse time. What I'm about to tell you, what we pay per inch to take a tree to a subcontractor now is going to, over the next year, year and a half, two years, most likely triple or quadruple. And we can't afford that. That's why that chipper was important, but we really have to, I think, have to scratch some money from the budget next year, because this is, this, like I said, to repeat myself, this is a tsunami of a problem. Some of these neighborhoods, you won't recognize their streets once these trees come down, and that would be, you know, throughout the city to a point, but heavy in, in Councilman Gurrel's district, in my district, and, and partially, and, and your district, Councilman Oderkirk, you know, when you get out towards Larkin, and, and in your district, Councilwoman. So let's all start thinking about that, because, I mean, it's not something we can kick down the road anymore, it's going to get ugly next year.
Just to add on to that, Councilman, you made some good points, but it's also going to cost more for the trees, because every city's going through that, so the cost of trees are going, is going to increase also, so, but you can get a tree for an out, three years, and now it might double to triple.
It's a good point, Mayor, and I, I've had a number of my, the residents said that they'd be willing to take advantage of a 50/50, they're, they're happy with that. I had one resident who said he'd pay for the whole tree. So that, that was just one resident, though. But yeah, you're, you're right, it's going, it's going to be more expensive, but we really have to get out in front of it now at this point, it's, it's going to get huge.
Councilman?
Just to kind of follow up, Councilman Hug and I had actually been discussing this, because it does affect our, our district, specifically the ones on the west side, but[1681.46]